Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. Next, we have public comment. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening, we would just ask if you would state your name and address, and please come forward to the podium.
My name is Judith Parks. What else did you want to know? Because I stopped listening when I realized I was going to start first.
Just your name and address, if you would.
Two hundred South Jefferson Street.
Okay.
I'm here to register my dissatisfaction, my lack of support for the current development. I'm not really opposed to development in that area. I totally understand why the city would want that area developed and why we, as neighbors, would like that area to be developed. But I'm really concerned about the height of the buildings and the density of the population that will be, not really right behind me, but right behind my neighbors. Part of the reason that I like living where I live is that I have access to the stores that I go to, and the majority of the people that live in this area walk to the store. They don't get in their car and drive to the store. So I like the small-town quality of that. And I'm a little concerned about the high density that that would, that how that might change, how that might change my property values. Because right now, where I live, the yards are pretty deep and lovely and quiet, and I'm not sure that it would stay that way. So again, while I'm saying that I'm not opposed to development, what I'm really opposed to is the increased density of the project. I don't know what traffic will look like, for example, in the morning. Right now, I get up and go to work early, and it's not so hard to get through those stoplights. Once I get on the main highway, it's usually backed up. But through Verona, it's not too bad. So I would like to, I would like for people to take a look at that density. As I understand it, for example, the apartment buildings that would be right behind my neighbors, there's a fifteen-foot swath between the back of the building and the end of the property. I could be wrong. But that's not even as wide as a street. And I can't imagine what, what kind of landscaping you would put in there that would really protect the privacy of both the people living in the apartment and the people living in the homes where we've made our homes for so long. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else desiring to speak?
Hi, I'm Lori Everett. My address is two oh two South Jefferson Street. I'm right in the neighborhood. We would look out our front porch and see the Lincoln Street Apartments. And I am also not opposed to development there because all the time I've thought there should be high density. We don't need more sprawl, but the height might be a concern and how many apartments are there. Dave Keller, at the Planning Commission meetings, said that this was staying legacy development, staying in the family for generations. And I wasn't sure what he meant by that. I would like clarification. Because in my experience, people don't stay in apartments and pass the apartment on to their kids, so, yeah. And the design, I'm wondering what that would look like in twenty or thirty years. It might feel dated, or that kind of thing. So, that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Randy Bruce. I'm representing John Dome this evening. We're the, I'm with Canothian Bruce Architects, we're the architects for the project on, that's been discussed so far this evening. And I'm not sure how much information is appropriate to give you right now, but I wanted to just give you a little bit of the background that we gave at the Plan Commission as well. John is working with his son on this development. It is, he has, he's a local developer, local landowner. He's developed Prairie Crest Apartments and has had that operating for, I believe, about fifteen years now. He develops, owns, manages these properties himself. This project is his next one he'd like to do here in Verona. And as was stated, it is, it is planned to be a legacy project. He wants this to be a project that he can pass along to his, to his son. And, and one of the highest quality that we can, we can do. One of the primary reasons that we're asking for the unit count on this property that we are, we're asking for one hundred and thirteen units, is to get enough units so that we can have good-quality materials, high-quality design, have onsite management, have the amenity package that we feel is going to be appropriate to bring in a good tenant profile and have a community here that would fit in with the, with the neighborhood. The, I think Adam Sayer's report talks about how the neighborhood downtown plan was planned with seventy-two units. I just want to compare that, that seventy-two units could, could easily have been a mix of two bedrooms, even some three-bedroom apartments. And having somewhere one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty bedrooms in that development would totally be understandable. The proposal that we're making is weighted many more towards one-bedroom apartments. We don't have a lot of two-bedrooms, and that's on purpose. We're looking for a singles, retired, also retired couples that are looking for really one, you know, one-bedroom, smaller units. So we have a total of one hundred and fifty-one bedrooms versus something, seventy-two units at even two-bedrooms averages one hundred and forty-four bedrooms. So we're really, we think, very comparable in terms of density is what was originally proposed. Unit count, it's a little bit misleading in the fact that we have so many small apartments, smaller apartments in terms of bedroom count. We look forward to working with staff and the neighborhood as we move forward on this development. And we're, we're happy to propose something here that we think's going to be a great asset to Verona. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Others wishing to speak?
Yeah, good evening. My name's Mike Hankert. I live at one hundred Park Avenue, so I'm on the second line of this situation. Some of my neighbors behind me are on the front line. They look out their backyards right onto this. I think we all agree, or certainly I agree, that some development may and probably will occur here. So this is not a NIMBY situation. It's just a, what do we put back there situation. And, you know, the architect just told you the reasons why they need the density. Fine, they have their reasons. They have to pay a lot for the land. They have to pay a lot to the builder. They want high-quality materials. These are all good things. But, you know, the density, they say they're targeting one-bedroom apartments, and so therefore they need the density. Well, we're the guys that take, you know, we're, we're the ones that get the back end of that. The two, three, four stories right in our backyards. Also, the land guy can make his money, and the developer can have this legacy project, and we can attract a bunch of millennials and retired people that are going to come in and out of here. So I just want everyone to take a pause and say, you know, to give the neighborhood some consideration. So, for example, there's a pool. They say they need these high amenities because we're attracting epic employees and retirees, et cetera. So there's a pool proposed. Well, if that was to go away, for example, maybe the two stories in our backyards could come down to one. And maybe the four stories could go down to three. Onsite management, okay, I get it. The current market demands that, but, so what? We're the ones holding the bag for that. I mean, so don't have onsite management, and maybe, again, a couple of units go away, and you go from two stories to one story in our backyard. So, you know, for us, it is about the massiveness and the proximity. And I will also say there are some water issues you should be aware of. I think you all know that's a, you know, there's drainage ways underneath there. That's a low-lying area. So I would ask the developer to take a serious look at the water situation in the as-built condition. Judith mentioned vegetation. That would obviously be something that can soften the blow. We'd definitely be interested in the landscaping plan. You know, where do you put patios and decks? Do you have two-story houses fifteen feet off the lot line with a second-story deck so that everybody can wave to each other through their windows? You know, the more we can think about these things and soften this blow, the more us, as the neighbors on the front line, would greatly appreciate it. You know, again, the architect talks about legacy project and all that. And that's all well and good for them, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not against it. But I just want our, our considerations heard. So I would, I would, I would recommend a little coffee here between the neighbors and the developer at some point, depending on what kind of proposal they come back to you after this first round. You know, let's talk. Let's, let's not be adversaries. Let's not be enemies. But let's not talk across each other. Let's talk to each other. And, you know, maybe there's an economic situation that can, you know, some kind of a middle ground that can be forged here. So, thank you very much for everything you guys do here, and good luck with this one.
Thank you, Mr. Hankert. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to speak under public comment?
I'm Gail Parskevis, and I live at two oh one South Jefferson, which is right in the backyard of what they're talking about. And I'm not real thrilled about having three hundred people in my backyard. So, I think it's just too dense, and I don't like the four-story middle-building idea at all. Maybe bring it down a little bit. That's all.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment?
Hi, I'm Leely Everett. I live at two oh two South Jefferson Street. And my worry is that a lot of the apartments I've seen so far, just around, look very much like large blocks. What I want is it to not just look like some large obstruction. I wouldn't mind it. In fact, I think it's a great idea, and I would love to have more people living nearby and just have a nice, big community like that. But my worry is that not enough thought could possibly be put into the design of it and the architecture. And that would be my biggest worry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Not seeing any takers at this time, so we will move on with the agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes from the April twenty-fourth meeting of the council, and those minutes were included with your packet. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Ms. Riki. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Under Mayor's business, I'm going to keep it real short this evening. There's a lot of activity going on, a lot of phone calls regarding development and potential development. But two things that I didn't want to mention this evening that I participated in since our last meeting was on Saturday, and we had Alder Person Steiner, Diaz, and Riki. And I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the Ice Age, that we became an Ice Age Trail community. Very nice event, out in Badger Prairie Park. And then the second thing is, not last week, but the week prior to that, spent a significant amount of time at the Badger Prairie Needs Network with Bob and Marshall Cachetta, some of the other people that, I was going to say staff, but they're not staff, really because they volunteer, they're volunteers. And, and kind of Executive Parisi was there. So it was a really good meeting. And one of the things that I learned, that I didn't know that they were doing there, is the, the kids that are over eighteen, I should say, students that are over eighteen that are getting some of their training at Badger Prairie Needs Network. It was really neat. We were able to talk to some of the teachers and also to some of the kids that are young adults and getting excellent, excellent training outside of the Verona-area schools. So it was really neat to see. So that concludes my report. I will move on then to the engineer, or, excuse me, to the administrative report. Mr. McCorskey, please.
Thank you. In front of you, I provided a interim report on the first poll call survey that we've started with regarding the swimming facility. Just wanted to keep council up to date since it is the first, the first survey that we're going out. We'll have another question going out tomorrow. But there's still another week for people to respond to this one. So I wanted to provide kind of an interim report on that. And basically, the results show that people are interested in either a swimming pool and a swimming pool with improvements to Fireman's Park. And we'll be providing you the, the final report, which would include any comments that are made on the survey as well.
Are there any questions for Mr. McCorskey? Seeing none, we will, Jeff, thank you, and we will move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Montpass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, a couple of quick updates. The traffic shift on PD is supposed to take place this weekend, along with the closure of Northern Lights at PD for the beginning of that reconstruction. Barring any weather delays or any issues that they come up with, intersection will be closed Friday, Saturday, hopefully open back up on Sunday, and traffic will be shifted to the new lanes, the new westbound lanes where both traffic shifts will be there. So both east and westbound lanes will be on the new pavement. The AECOM has completed the utility design for the M Utility and Road Reconstruction Project. Those have been submitted to MSA and the DOT for inclusion of that larger project that is, I believe, supposed to bid in August with, I believe, construction starting supply in late 2017. Traffic signals at Old PB and Whalen are installed, with the exception of the lights in the cabinets, all the conduit, the bases, the pavement, the sidewalk, all's been in. We're waiting for the poles to be delivered and the cabinet to be delivered from Madison. So those should be, hopefully, by middle of this month or no later than Memorial Day in. The West End Circle, the conduits and the bases are in. Pavement replacement possibly later this week or early next week. And then the Peola and Main Street, the conduits are bored. The bases are being ready to be poured, but those probably won't go until after the shutdown on down, up the downtown streets. So they'll wait and do that when the streets are closed. The bike pad projects, Project one, three, eight, and ten, which is the sidewalk on M and, I'm drawing a blank on it, down to Bruce on, I'm still drawing a blank on this, Locust, thank you. Sorry, the, the survey's done. AECOM started the design on those. Preliminary drawings will be to the city in a couple of weeks. And same thing with the parking lot reconstructions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Montpass? Seeing none, Jeff, thank you. And we will move on. Committee reports, Planning Commission. Mr. Sayer, would you provide the background, please?
Sure. The first item on, for the Plan Commission is for a plan development, concept plan located at one oh two, one oh four Lincoln Street that would allow for the construction of one hundred and thirteen apartment units. The applicant is requesting a plan unit development concept review to allow for the construction of one hundred and thirteen apartment units at one oh two, one oh four Lincoln Street. The downtown mobility and development plan recommended that this property be redeveloped as a multifamily land use with seventy-two units. The Plan Commission reviewed the project on May first of 2017. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the multifamily use and concerns about the density and the four-story building. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept, and no formal motion is required as this is the conceptual review of the project.
So we are open for comments or questions at this point. Mr. Diaz, please. Alder Diaz.
Thank you. There's a question for Adam. So in, in the plan, it calls for seventy-two units. Why is that?
Mr. Sayer.
The plan was adopted in 2014. I don't recall the exact rationale for seventy-two units.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
I guess, to me, seventy-two seems a lot more reasonable, especially considering where it is. Are there any potential concerns with, with traffic coming back through the neighborhoods, like south?
Mr. Sayer, please.
Staff, we've kind of taken a look at that. I think with the new lights that are located at Lincoln and Verona Avenue, we don't have any concerns about that. I would anticipate traffic most likely heading north more often than going south. No, I think the caveat with that is, obviously, with the new lights being put in at Peala and Main Street, I mean, that might change traffic patterns throughout the city. But I think initially, no, we don't have any concerns of traffic.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
I guess this is just follow-up, general comments. I would like to see the density come down. Well, I generally like high, high-density in commercial corridors. This is not, to me anyways, it doesn't strike me as a commercial corridor. It strikes me as a residential area. I like the, the comments in public testimony about a green screen. That seems like a very reasonable thing. That could kind of, kind of make it fit in the neighborhood better. I, I don't know if this is in the preview of the City Council, but I, I definitely agree with the comment about that it might be nice to have some unique-looking buildings. I know, once, once one kind of apartment gets approved, it's safer just to have everything look like a cookie cutter, cutter, but I would like to think we could do better than that. And then just generally, aside from less density, I'd like to see the height come down as well, just for privacy concerns, both for the people in the apartments and the people in the neighborhood. And, and so those are the things I'd like to see changed with the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I would concur. I feel like this is an excellent area to really kind of play around with design elements, especially with its close proximity to the new theater. This is really part of the gateway of our community. So it would be really interesting to see if we could do something unique in that space. I guess just to address some public comments, everything I've seen with the analysis of multifamily developments, especially ones that have such high material standard and design standards as they do, which is required here in Verona, I haven't seen anything about negative impacts on housing values. It's more, the more dilapidated buildings that don't get good care and things like that. That's where you can see negative effects. Also, I think this is actually probably a good location for this as well because it has such close proximity to public transportation through the bus routes off of East Verona Avenue. We also have great access to the bike trails at this location, which give folks, who would potentially be living in this multifamily development, multimodal options of transportation. I guess the rest of my questions are probably more related to Mr. Bruce, if he's able to answer some things.
Go ahead, Ms. Doyle.
Thank you. So I guess I'm curious. You mentioned that you were looking for a good tenant profile. So what is exactly, does that mean?
We're, you know, we're, we're looking for, for solid, what I wouldn't call a solid tenant. One, one that is, is a good community member, doesn't cause problems to other tenants or the neighborhood around. I mean, honestly, the, the rent levels will demand, you know, a decent income. There's, you know, we're, we're, we're reaching towards, you know, what I want to call it, you know, a, a good, solid tenant. And that's essentially it.
Sure. So in related to that, what do you project to be the rent amounts? And how will that be affected by a decrease in density?
I can't, I, I'm sorry. At this point, I can't answer that, other than to say that we'll be at the, towards the top end of the rent level, market rents in the Verona area. We're going to, we're going to have to do that for the project to be economically viable. In terms of what happens if we, if density drops, then, then we're going to have to look at a reduction in quality of materials or in other amenities that, that we think create a really strong community.
Sure. So it wouldn't necessarily, so it wouldn't necessarily affect rents, just more, as you said, the quality of the materials for the project?
Correct.
Let's see here. And then you also mentioned, and based on the mix of units, it looks like it's more efficiencies in one bedrooms. So that's, it sounds like it's more based on developer preferences than really market studies?
It's a little bit of both. It's the developer, because he has apartments here in the community, has a good feel of what the, the market really is demanding right now. And so based on his experience, which is pretty long-term, he's given us a, a unit mix that he feels is going to be successful over time.
Sure. I guess I was just curious, because I know in previous discussions regarding Sugar Creek Commons, they found that once they did the market study, there's actually more of a demand for two-bedroom units. And I would say that that's something that I, you know, from looking at the rental mixes in Verona and just the area in general, feel like the larger units can really be great because that makes these types of developments more accessible to families. I know, especially with close proximity to schools and walking and trails and recreation, that is something that's nice to see is just more inclusive rental mixes. And it sounds like already, just with density and other kind of factors at this development, high rents are kind of a given. But I would love to see if there's any opportunity to add some affordability to the project. That would be nice to see as well. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In this development, you're moving in on these people who have been here a very long time. These homes have been built for well over twenty years, and, and now we have another generation of people moving in and buying these used homes and fixing them up and, and trying to make it their own home. And now we're, we're looking at bringing in this huge density project. It's not a good fit for this neighborhood. Along with concerns with relationships with the neighbors, you, you also have the, the traffic which you'll generate, especially in the early morning and late afternoon when people are coming and going. I agree with Ms. Doyle about the amenities that go with this area. But I also know that we have placed some very big parts of our city in this area. The, the fire department, and they come and go there seven days a week. They train on Monday nights, and there's traffic from them almost all the time. And then you look at what's building, being built with the VACT. That's a beautiful building and a very big part of our community. And no one from this neighborhood complained about them. This project for the VACT is a positive thing for this development, but it does bring some things that might concern all of us if we allow this development to take place. They're putting children's stage in this area. So there's going to be a lot of children coming and going. And granted, the bike path will bring a lot of them. The streets will bring a few. And mommy and daddy will bring most. Drop-offs and then come back hour and a half later. They're going to have performances there for the children's theater. It's a beautiful projection with mirrors in the round. So these young actors and actresses will be able to be trained. But when they're done, they're ready to go home. And if they're not picked up, they might be walking, or they might be riding a bike. And you can get the picture now of what's going on in that area. Now let me add another part that brings more... Now let me add another part that brings more density into this area and a lot of emergency situations, and that's our police department is located here in the city center. There are police officers coming and going all the time. Sometimes they're in a hurry, and we, we just can't have the congestion that this density project will bring. And then, of course, let's go to the Veterans Park. A huge, huge park that is part of our society and the recreation of our young people and some adults and all sports. Now picture that, these people who live in this area have been living with all of this, and I have not received any complaints from those neighbors of the people who spoke tonight and their neighbors. And I've been around District Three for quite a while. I've been real happy with everything that's going on. I was a little concerned about the fire department when it came in, and I did speak up about that, but I think we need to really take a look at the density of this project. I understand he wants to bring more homes in and, and allow people who are coming and going and live for three, four years and then move on, but please, listen to these neighbors. They've been here a long time, they're, and, and we just need to be listening to them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other comments, questions? Ms. Gaskill, please.
I have a question, please, again for you, Mr. Bruce, if you wouldn't mind. I'm just curious if you can elaborate on the project schedule. The information I have in front of me says that basically the first building will be built in 2018 and then the rest, as the market dictates. Do you have any idea of, like, years that that would take?
Well, I, I would, I would anticipate that the project would get built out in, in approximately two years.
Two years. And then what is the first building? Is it Building A?
Uh, the, the first building would be the building right on, on the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Gaskill? All right, thank you. Ms. Reiki?
I just had more a comment, but if you, if you want to comment on my comment, that'd be great. So I'm just wondering if there were fewer units overall, whether there are more affordable units, like two bedrooms or, or, or not. I guess I'm wondering if you could put all the parking underground to maybe help mitigate that potential water drainage issue that was brought up?
So, uh, let me talk about the parking issue first. We, we have, uh, one parking stall per dwelling unit underground right now and about point-eight-five parking stalls per unit on the surface. We think is a little bit strong, but we wanted to make sure that we had enough parking on, onsite to accommodate everybody. We could, we could certainly work with, uh, staff to, at a, maybe reducing the surface parking somewhat. We think that there is some room to reduce that and still be, um, sufficient for us. And I think that, um, this next phase, after we get through this concept phase, we'll get our civil engineer on board to, to do a stormwater analysis of the site. We know generally what needs to happen, but we haven't looked into it in, in great detail yet. We do know that a lot of water passes through that site or can pass through that site, so it is something of, of some concern to us as well. As far as, uh, reducing the number of units, maybe including some more two-bedrooms, again, we, we feel like the, the unit mix that's been proposed and the unit count that's been proposed gets us the, gets us the, the type of tenant, the type of project value that's necessary to do the, do the, the, the right project. And we do want one that fits in with the neighborhood. I mean, and as, as we get into the design more, certainly we can take a look at the architecture, make sure that the, uh, that we can, uh, work to break down the scale of the buildings, do what we can to mitigate the impacts of, of the project on the neighbors. And, uh, as I said, we, we look forward to working with, with staff in the neighborhood as we, as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Lender, please.
Thank you. Uh, my first question, Mr. Bruce, is, uh, did you met with the residents at all? Have you had any formal meetings?
We have not, no. We, we, we plan on doing that. We wanted to get through this first stage here, this concept plan stage, and then, then we'll, we, we plan on submitting or sitting down with the, with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I highly encourage that. That's, that's my fir-, that was my main question. Now, just some, in general, some feedback. I agree with the density. I think it's a little, I think it's a little high. Um, I'm worried about the four-story building. I don't think that's probably the proper location for that. I would keep the buildings away from the residents as much as possible. And, uh, in general, I'm only, I'd say I'm kind of lukewarm on it. I'm not super excited about it because it's so close to residential. I've seen a lot of stuff in the past where moving multifamily next to residential doesn't always work out real well. And, uh, so let's come to feedback. And the other thing I was going to add is that, uh, over the last six years, I think we've had fifty percent of, seventy-seven percent of all of our units approved have been multifamily compared to forty-three, single-family. So our mix has really been multifamily-heavy over the last few years. That, that came from the plan commission package, so I just thought I'd throw that out for food for thought.
Thank you. As long as Mr. Lender mentioned that. Adam did provide, uh, Mr. Sarah did provide us some of the housing data, and I don't have that with me tonight, but I know I totaled it up and I saved it on my phone, so. From 2010 to 2016, we approved four hundred and fifty-four single-family units, and we had multifamily units in that same time period of nine hundred and seventy-six units. And two of those years, if I remember correctly, there were no apartments, uh, multifamily approved at all. So, but I wanted to be fair and use the same numbers, so. Four hundred and fifty-four, single-family, nine hundred and seventy-six, uh, multifamily in that same time period. Mr. Lender, please.
I think that's, nine seventy-six is the total between the two. I counted up, five hundred and thirty-nine.
Mr. Sarah, do you have that in front of you?
I can pull it. He's got the calculator on him. I do. If you, if you want to keep talking, I guess I can come back to this for about two minutes. I just need to add it up quickly.
Any other comments specific to this proposal or questions while Mr. Sarah's looking? Ms. Doyle?
I would just say to, uh, follow up on the comments for context of the number of apartment buildings. I know a report in 2015 found that in the Madison area, we would need over a thousand units per year indefinitely to meet the demand for rentals, just because a lot of the housing preferences in upcoming generations have really changed from big, single-family homes to smaller, more environmentally friendly, more dense, um, apartment buildings.
Just, and I'll just follow up on that then. Every single developer that I've talked to that's doing multifamily, some won't say it publicly, but everyone has said privately that the market is saturated in this region. Now, we haven't built as high of a percentage of multifamilies as other municipalities have, but if you look at the Madison, Dane County region, developers will tell you that we have overbuilt as far as multifamily, and that has caused rents to stabilize and in some cases even go down in parts of the region. So that has been a concern of mine for the past several years, so I just want the council to keep that in mind, too, that yes, as a region, we're growing, but, uh, the demand for the multifamily has slowed down tremendously since then. Mr. Sarah, please.
Sure. So the, the number of permits issued for single-family and multifamily since 2010 through March 31st of this year, we've issued since 2010, four hundred and sixty-nine permits for new single-family houses, and we've issued permits for five hundred and thirty-nine multifamily units. So that's actually the permits that have actually gone out and been issued, so typically, that's actually what's getting, getting built.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sarah.
And that's since 2010.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Questions or comments? I also see that Mr. Keller has been asked. Dave, if you would. Go ahead, Dave.
My name is Dave Keller, and I developed the city center condominiums over on the bike path, um, near Miller's Grocery Store. And listening to some of the comments, it hearkened back to about, I think it was about ten years ago, believe it or not, there are some of the same perceived, um, concerns. And, uh, as it turns out, I can report tonight that there's twenty-eight new families, owner-occupants living now, uh, in your downtown. And, uh, that would probably be considered a multifamily, um, density, when in fact it, it may be perceived as a multifamily building, it is an owner-occupied type thing. So I don't know how that flows into your numbers and so on, so that may, it's not just single-family homes where we're seeing, um, some demand from that. But, uh, I could tell you in talking with the retailers downtown, when we started the project, that they were very, very excited that there was going to be more, um, consumers, uh, the Millers, the coffee shops, um, what you see now with Farm &amp; Fleet and so on. So I think that that's another thing to consider on this project, that it is going to strengthen your retail base. You're starting to do some infrastructure improvements downtown, and, uh, these people will be within walking distance of the downtown and will help maybe expand that retail market. So that's something also, uh, to consider, uh, from that perspective. But I can speak, um, directly to the developer's experience. Very high quality. He's got a track record in Verona. Um, he's not somebody that's going to buy it and sell it to somebody. It's going to be a long-term family hold, and it's something that you can look at his track record out at Prairie Crest and see that it's been a very successful development. So, um, I think it's a very much of a win for Verona in the fact that you've got somebody who is committed and is going to do very high-quality development. So, just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Any other questions? We are not, or comments, we're not looking. Ms. Reiki, please.
I just wondered if Mr. Keller might want to come back up and, um, speak to the owner or the, um, manager onsite idea, and if that, um, would be the case regardless of how many units are there. You're not the one to-
I can't speak directly to that. I'm not part of the development team. Okay? So I just have done some development in Verona, and, um, so I can't speak directly to that question, other than we do own some apartments, my family, and at every opportunity, we always have somebody, either, uh, resident manager onsite or actually a paid employee onsite, and that makes all the difference in the world. Eyes and ears, twenty-four-seven, or at least during the time, is key to quality management. But, uh, I don't know.
I'm John Doan. Maybe I'd be better to answer some of these questions.
John, if you wouldn't mind, wait till you come to the podium, so.
Sorry?
If you wouldn't mind, wait with your response until you come to the podium.
Sure.
Because otherwise, the people at home certainly won't hear.
You want me to sign this in too, also?
If you would. Actually, you don't have to because you're speaking as part of the project, so.
Okay. Um, please help me again. What is your question?
I just wondered if you could talk about onsite management and the benefits of that.
Onsite management, what regards?
Um, just how many units would need to be present in order to, um, sustain onsite management and why onsite management is preferable?
General rule of thumb for any apartment community, you really support onsite management to include management staff as well as maintenance staff, ground staff and the like. We look for a minimum of a hundred units. Hundred units, not being, uh, necessarily an accurate indicator, dependent upon the volume of tenants relative to those units is important, too. In other words, call it a hundred two-bedroom units would suffice economically to, be necessary to support that kind of staff. Um, can I ask a question?
Sure, Ken.
I hear regularly from everyone, the reference to density, what are we talking about? Are we talking about apartment units? We talking about people? We talking about cars? Uh, when we refer to density, everybody says we want less density. What are we talking about?
Ms. Doyle?
I'd like to say, I didn't say I wanted less density, but typically what we use for the measure of density is units per acre.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding of it. I don't know, other folks have said that they wanted lower density, and I don't know what their interpretation of it is.
Can anybody help me with that? Because clearly, I'd like to develop something that everybody is going to be happy with in the end. Um, and I don't know which way or which direction to go, and I'm told less density, and I don't know what it's referring to.
I would agree with Ms. Doyle that it's, uh, based on a number of units per acre.
Okay. Uh, I heard the neighborhood complained that they didn't want three hundred people in their backyard. Now that's a reference to density of people as opposed to units, right? Now, we're not suggesting anything like that. We're suggesting a hundred and fifty people, half of what they're concerned, or the concern that, which was expressed. They don't want three hundred, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty people on this site. With seventy-two two-bedroom units, we're looking at a hundred and fifty people on the site. So from a humanity standpoint, traffic standpoint, uh, hustle and bustle, whether it's a hundred and thirteen efficiencies in ones or a hundred and seven, or rather, seventy-two two-bedrooms, we're talking about the same number of people. The difference being, at this level, we can get more rent on a per-square-foot basis and thereby afford to offer a better product. By offering a better product, we can attract, hopefully, a more qualified, a more stable, secure tenant or resident, and be able to afford, uh, better amenities and the like at the same time. I've heard this refu- referred to as the gateway to Verona, which it is, and it deserves a first-class development. But in order to do that, we've got to be able to provide a product that can generate the revenue to support it. That's why we're going in the direction that we are. We go back seventy-two unit, two-bedrooms and give you vinyl siding and kind of a simple thing, and make, they'll be worth less money. Somebody referred to making them more affordable. I'm not quite sure what that is, what direction that's pointing in, but I don't know that you'd be happy with that product in the long run. So I guess my, my point is that, if we're going to talk about density, we need to be talking about the number of people rather than the number of units. I think that that's really what the major concern is.
Ms. Doyle?
Sure. And I brought up affordability, and part of that is there's lots of different mechanisms available throughout the county and hopefully still at the federal level between Lytech. Dane County has affordable housing, grant programs and funding programs, so, and that's something that, um, there's a few developments over in Middleton. I'm spacing on the names of them off the top of my head, but they do a mix of market rent units and have a couple affordable units because they've utilized Lytech funding and mechanisms of that nature, just so, you know, regular folks, our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers can afford to live in these kind of nice, high-development communities as well. So it's just nice if you can find that component, but I know-
Sure.
-that's where density is difficult. You know, when you have higher density, it's easier to make projects like that work.
Talking about density?
Density, units per acre.
Units per acre.
Units per acre. Yep.
And so, um, and, and I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, 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 that's okay. That was just my point. That's one thing that I just think that, um, we have a fantastic community here in Verona, but it makes it very difficult because there is such a high demand for housing, and I'm hoping that, that we see that oversaturation soon in vacancy rates, because throughout Dane County, we have, what, a two percent vacancy rate for most apartments? So hopefully, we see that go up a little bit more, and that helps with rents as well. So, just something, I know it's very difficult because there's such high demand and there's not a lot of room for development here in Verona. It's tough to get that more affordable component, but it's just something I'm trying to just consistently bring up, just so we have that conversation going at a community level.
Sure.
I know it's difficult on a project-by-project basis, but I just think it is an important thing for us to consider.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely agree.
Mr. Chisholm, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for coming up. The, um, your architect brought up, I'll call it legacy, something for your son possibly to potentially inherit or somehow get into the family business. Is, was, did I inter- understand that correctly?
I think that's a springboard. I'm only getting bits, pieces, since this is the first, you know, I've been at, but I think Dave Keller started the legacy thing, which I'm grateful for, I guess, but the point is, is that my son and I work together. My son's now twenty-eight, he's been managing most of the apartments that we, I own, uh, for the last several years, and, and as much as he's chosen that as his career, he's going to follow me as I go out the door. Um, I currently don't own anything that I haven't had for less than twelve years. I'm not a buyer and seller. Um, and I think because of that, the fact that Jacob's following me up and because I'm a holder, I'm not a flipper or a turner, is why David, I think, started the whole legacy thing. I could be wrong, but I'm, I think that's what he's referring to.
And I'll say, for me, I'm, I'm a big fan of owner, owners that build and maintain, you know, one of my biggest concerns about apartment buildings in general is that they maintain a high quality to, and keep residents that care about where they live and therefore care about their neighbors. But what, what always scares me as a property owner is being next to someone who doesn't care and kind of trashes the place or makes it undesirable.
And thank you for that. That's a good point. In nineteen eighty- In 1980, I started Regency Property Management Company, which is a property management company designed to manage only the assets that I own. And I managed everything, student units, slums, foreclosure, garden-style high-rises, and all I care about right now is managing low-maintenance, low-management-style properties. And what that means is, building a good-quality property that attracts a good-long-range tenant that is going to be on the easiest level of all to manage.
So can you describe to me how some of these buildings that you've owned for quite a while, what you do to maintain them, keep them nice, keep them desirable for people to?
Well, first and most important thing, I think, is having onsite people. You have onsite people that have vested interest and care about it, they're there all the time, so that all the residents have access to a manager at any time for any difficulties or problems that they might have. We do thorough budgeting every fall, rebidding all subcontracted work. We do business planning for the entire year in terms of what kind of preventative maintenance, what kind of upgrades we're going to be doing. We pay our staff very, very well, so that we get good, we get good-quality management or maintenance staff, and grounds people, and office staff, and that kind of thing. You know, it's a combination of a whole lot of things, but ultimately, it kind of gets down to money. I mean, you've got to pay for what you get. If you want to pay a little more, you can get a better quality of staff, materials, et cetera. And I've come to learn that that's the best business plan, so.
Lastly, can you describe to me a situation in one of your properties where maybe you've either tried developing a property, and neighbors, like we've had some wonderful neighbors here that have come to this property to discuss their opinion on this development? You know, how either you've been able to help bridge a gap that may have existed, or even, you know, where it started out as a tenuous relationship and maybe ended up maybe not being tense?
I think all new developments create a lot of concerns, particularly in the residents, because of the unknown. They don't know what's coming. And ultimately, you've got to listen to what their concerns are. You all probably here know as well as the neighborhood what the concerns are going to be, and so it's listening to folks like you, listening to the folks that live around. And a lot of the concerns go away once they understand exactly what's coming. I talked to one of the neighbors that butts this property on Saturday, who was concerned about some of the same things. "I don't want 300 people back here." While hearing that it's only 150, she became fine with that. She says she was concerned about traffic. Well, hearing that, okay, where she happens to go to work, you know, she's running against traffic each way, going and coming home, and so any traffic increases that would be generated aren't really going to affect her. She threw out the idea, you know, go to three stories and get rid of the fourth story. We talked a little bit about that, but ultimately, after talking for a little while, and she got a sense of what was coming and what we intended to do, she decided not to come to the meeting tonight. She was confident that what the result was going to be was going to be as good as it could be.
So with that said, you know, I think to Mr. Linder's point about having, meeting with your neighbors, possibly reaching out
Sure.
To the neighborhood, collecting their feedback. I think about the development of Nine Mountain Paoli Street, where the neighbors got very involved with the developer.
Mm-hmm.
I think they both, you know, they came together to figure something out that worked, that they felt worked in their community. I think because you're asking to change right now, which is in a light-industrial area, to be multifamily, you know, it's a change. You know, the two businesses that are there, C-Corps and Universal Separators, you know, what I like about having business there is at least it employs people, people are working. I'm actually sad about them going away. I don't, I would love to hear what's going on with them.
Trust me, I'll be employing people, too.
True that. But, you know, so for me, I think it's, I just want to reiterate, I think it's very important for you to reach out to the neighbors.
Absolutely.
I'd love to have the neighbors come back, kind of let us know. You know, I think of Harmony Hills, you know, I've been on the council long enough. Harmony Hills, large apartment buildings, I think three stories, you know, very contentious. They created a neighborhood association to kind of come together to go against the apartments, and in the end, you know, last I heard, there was a good relationship between the apartment dwellers and the neighbors. But it came with building a relationship, and I think that would be a great place to start from here.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Mr. Sayer, if you could just close the loop here by talking about next steps, not only for the council, but for those that are here, and, yes, thank you, and those watching at home.
Sure, this is a planned development. So tonight, this is the conceptual conversation review by the council. This is also discussed by the Plan Commission, as I stated in the introduction. The project goes forward, the next step would be the general development plan. That would be a public hearing before the Plan Commission, and then would ultimately go to the council for approval. And the last step in the process, the precise implementation plan, the PIP. That's where detailed plans are submitted, including photometrics, landscaping, full-engineered plans. Once again, we'd have a public hearing before the Plan Commission, and that'd be a recommendation then to the common council as well. So there's two more steps in the process to go.
And there will be opportunity, again, for the public through public input on that as well. So thank you for that, Mr. Sayer. With that, Mr. Sayer, would you go to Agenda Item 9A2, please?
Should be a motion before I do the summary, or should I read the summary first, then?
Let's do the summary this evening first, thank you.
Okay. So this is an ordinance, ordinance number 17-892, amending Section 13-2-5, parentheses of the Code of Ordinances, and creating Section 13-2-5, parentheses, parentheses 1, and 13-2-5, parentheses, parentheses 1A of the Code of Ordinances. The proposed zoning text amendment will amend the city's floodplain ordinance. The proposed amendment will modify the flood insurance study map numbers and add official maps based upon studies. This ordinance change is necessary due to floodplain changes to the dry tributary near Epic. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on May 1st of 2017, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of the zoning text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. The council has heard the background, what's your pleasure? Mr. Linder?
Move approval of the ordinance presented by Mr. Sayer.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tuchet. Questions or comments? Questions or comments on the ordinance? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve ordinance number 17-892. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Sayer, anything else that you want to report from the Plan Commission?
No, that's all.
Thank you. We will move then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Ms. Ricky, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve a special event permit for Hometown Days, June 1 through 4, 2017, from Lee Jordan, Verona Area Chamber of Commerce, contingent upon the list of employees being provided to the Police Department by Wenzel Amazements.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Tuchet. Ms. Ricky?
The Verona Area Chamber of Commerce has applied for a special event permit to host the 2017 Hometown Days Festival located at Festival Park behind City Hall. The event has been expanded to include a marketplace tent and additional children's activities. The general layout and hours of the festival are consistent with last year. This application includes the event-related activities, including the parade. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee considered this special event application and approved it earlier this evening, and makes a recommendation to the common council to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the special event permit application for Hometown Days, June 1st through 2017, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, please.
Number 9B2 is a motion for a temporary Class B beer license for Verona Hometown Days, June 1 through 4, contingent upon record checks being completed for this license for Rotary.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tuchet. Ms. Ricky, please.
The Pittsburgh Verona Rotary Club has applied for a temporary Class B beer license for June 1 through 4, 2017, for the beer tent on the Festival Park grounds as part of Verona Hometown Days. As in prior years, the beer tent will be open Thursday through Sunday. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee approved this license earlier this evening, and makes a recommendation to the common council for action.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from the Pittsburgh Verona Rotary Club for Hometown Days. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, please.
Item 9B3 is a special event permit for the second anniversary party from Phil Hoaks Top House Brewing Company.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second? Second by Ms. Gasko. Ms. Ricky, please.
Phil Hoaks has applied for a special event permit for an anniversary party on Saturday, June 17th, 2017, from 12:00 noon till 10:00 PM at Hop House Brewing Company, 231 South Main Street. The business's parking lot will be used for seating, a food cart, and live music with metal barricades marking the perimeter of the parking lot area. A temporary premise description amendment is required for serving beer and wine in this area. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee reviewed this application earlier tonight and makes a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Mr. Tuchet?
I will have to abstain from this motion.
And the minutes will reflect that. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a special event permit application for the Hop House Brewing Company second anniversary party on Saturday, June 17th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and we'll let the minutes reflect that. Mr. Tuchet, abstain. Ms. Ricky, please.
Item 9B4, I make a motion to approve a temporary premise description amendment for Class C wine license on Saturday, June 17th, 2017, for the Hop House Brewing Company LLC located at 231 South Main Street to include the front parking lot.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gasko. Ms. Ricky, please.
So Phil Hoaks has applied for this temporary premise description amendment for Hop House Brewing Company Class Wine, Class C wine license to include the business's front parking lot located at 231 South Main Street on June 17th. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee approved this, just so they can have wine and beer in that area for their party. And recommend.
Thank you. Mr. Tuchet, please.
Again, I will be abstaining.
Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Not seeing any? The motion before you is to approve a temporary premise description amendment for Class C wine license on Saturday, June 17th, for the Hop House Brewing Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries, and we'll let the minutes reflect that. Mr. Tuchet, abstain. Ms. Ricky, please.
Item 9B5, I make a motion to approve a premise description amendment for Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for Verona Woods, 958 Liberty Drive, to include an outdoor patio with the condition of consuming alcohol no later than 10:00 PM.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tuchet. Ms. Ricky, please.
Steve Turner is requesting a premise description amendment for Verona Woods, 958 Liberty Drive, to include an outdoor patio. The city building inspector-in-chief, Coughlin, have inspected the patio area for conformance with Police Department and safety regulations. The applicant is requesting a patio closing time of 11:00, but we're approving 10:00 on Friday and Saturday nights. Chief Coughlin is recommending this 10:00 PM closing time for those nights. The Public Safety and Welfare Committee talked about that earlier tonight and recommends the 10:00 PM closing time, and for that to be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Not seeing any? I'm sorry, Mr. Tuchet.
I'd like to make a comment. The 10:00 PM was set to be consistent with the rest of the city, you know, even though where they're located, there isn't a lot of residential density around there. You know, we could potentially foresee a reason to extend it to 11:00 like they asked, but for consistency's sake, and also, we discovered, published on their website, they listed 10:00 PM as closing hours, that we felt 10:00 PM was a reasonable time.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a premise description amendment for a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for Verona Woods. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee? Thank you. We will move then to the Finance Committee. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. Under Agenda Item 9C1, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
Sure. By way of explanation, some of the larger expenditures for this motion include a bond trust services corporation payment in the amount of $202,031.25, and then a payment to Parisi Construction for streetscaping stages 2 and 3 construction in the amount of $126,013.60.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Not seeing any? The motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $710,871.04. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Doyle, please.
Next, under Item 9C2, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-024, approving a lease agreement between the City of Verona and Verona Area Community Theater Inc. for land located at 103 Lincoln Street in the city of Verona.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle, please.
Just for some background, the lease agreement is to allow the Verona Area Community Theater to be built upon city property and the conditions regarding the land. Lease term is 50 years with no monthly rent for use of the property. All costs of operating the premises are to be paid by the tenant. The tenant shall, at its own cost and expense, keep, maintain, and repair the premises, including all improvements, whether interior or exterior, structural or nonstructural, including but not limited to the roof, foundation, and all utility systems, all heating, electrical, air conditioning, ventilating, and plumbing equipment therein, let's see, in good condition and repair, and shall repair, restore, or replace any such improvements which may become inoperable or be destroyed or damaged by fire, causality, obsolescence, age, or any other cause. Also, tenant shall, at its own expense, keep the premises in sanitary, clean, and neat order, maintain the landscaping on the premises except cutting grass, and shall be responsible for keeping any sidewalks on the premises free of snow, ice, and trash. Tenant shall keep the entrance to the parking lot on the premises free of any obstructions which would prevent access. Then on the landlord's side, landlord agrees that it shall keep the sidewalk on Lincoln Street free of snow, ice, and trash, shall plow the parking lot on the premises, and shall cut the grass on the premises. In addition, landlord shall maintain the pedestrian bridge located on or adjacent to the premises.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Questions, comments? We also have, representing VACT, Dee Baldock and Lynn Vilker are here this evening, and are willing to answer any questions, as well as our legal counsel, Mr. Kleymeyer. Questions, comments? Mr. Kleymeyer?
Mayor, if I could just mention one thing, and I don't think the motion...
If I can mention one thing, and I don't think the motion needs to be amended, but just to be clear, there's a few sections right in the defined terms that would have to be completed once we actually execute the lease, and it doesn't change the substantive terms, and I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
One thing I'd like to add that came up at the committee-level discussion was that liability for recreational dance classes through the city of Verona would be covered through a waiver, which is not necessarily right in this lease, but both parties felt that the waivers would be sufficient to address this issue.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Any questions or comments? Mr. Linder, please.
I was curious, Mr. Kleymeyer, is here, is there something we're missing here?
No, I just think that this has been a, I'm here in case you had any questions.
Okay.
The fact that you don't is fantastic. It sounds like the lease as presented is in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-17-24, approving a lease approve resolution R dash one seven dash twenty-four, approving a lease agreement between the city of Verona and Verona Area, Area Community Theater, Inc., for land located at one oh one Lincoln Street. Sorry. I thought I said one oh three. Did I say a different number?
You said one oh one.
One oh one, one oh three, uh, one oh three Lincoln Street. Thank you for catching that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries.
Is, is that, excuse me, Mayor, is that the last step?
That is the last step as far as the lease for the building. And, um, Mr. Kleymeyer, any additional steps?
I would just, for, just for informational purposes, we do have a property use agreement that we executed, I want to say, on July of last year. And as, as the VA C moves...
Moves from one facility to the other, there are certain steps that will be taken. But I think that this is the last step for the council.
Make the motion to apply.
All right. Thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Doyle, please.
For Agenda Item nine C three, I would like to make a, um, motion to approve resolution number R dash seventeen dash zero two five, approving a transit service agreement between the city of Madison and the city of Verona.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Diaz. Ms. Doyle, please.
So the transit agreement between the city of Madison and the city of Verona formalizes the agreement for bus commuter service that has been provided under the provision of Transit Service MOU since two thousand and twelve. The commuter bus, bus service includes Route fifty-five and Route seventy-five. In consideration of Transit Service, Madison will bill the city actual proportional cost of providing the services minus fares collected on a quarterly basis. Um, and also, we talked about how this is just making it so as long as the, um, number of service hours do not change, this agreement will just be, um, updated or, uh, renewed on a, I believe it's just annual basis, or basically in perpetuity unless there's a change in service hours.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve resolution number R dash one seven dash zero two five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Ms. Doyle, anything else from the Finance Committee?
Nothing further from Finance this evening.
Thank you. Uh, we are on to all business, selection of a city council representative to the Plan Commission. Do we have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jack Linder.
Mr. Touche nominates Mr. Linder. Any other nominations? Ms. Doyle?
I would like to nominate Alder Diaz.
And Alder Diaz has been nominated. Any additional nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. Requires, uh...
Can we say anything, Mayor?
You sure can. Go ahead. We'd, uh, offer that to both candidates. Mr. Linder, please.
Thanks. Um, I did, I do want to reiterate that I, I do want to be on the Plan Commission. Um, I've been on the Plan Commission for about twelve years or so, and I think it's one of those positions where experience can make a difference. You know, you've seen stuff before, seen how it works or doesn't work. Um, it helps to ask the right questions, not just ask questions, but, um, when to ask questions and when not to. I thought, uh, I think that's something that's real important. Um, I'm really good at making the meetings. I rarely miss a meeting. I don't know if I missed more than one in the last two years. Um, I guess the process, one thing that, you know, I feel like we're not working together on this. It feels like we worked together to nominate Ms. Doyle for president, and then immediately division came and we want to break up the Plan Commission nomination into two people. And that, that part's been a little disappointing. Um, what I saw the other night, I was at the Plan Commission on Monday, and they were, the city council representative was short and another person. So there's also a chance that quorum could be a problem down the road. I believe, uh, maybe one or two meetings I've had in the last few years where there was the minimum people there, and that was including myself. So it's, it's something that we need to be aware of. It would look pretty bad, I think, on the city if we can't even get a quorum to the Plan Commission for people to come and give action to and, and, uh, feedback. Um, I'm asked for your support. Uh, most of this stuff does come back to the council, for you guys to vote on, but I ask for your support. And, I mean, you know, it's what, nine, uh, ten, eleven months yet, we can do this again, and, uh, never know what's gonna happen. So that's, I hope, I hope we can finish this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm running for the Plan Commission spot because I think I bring a, a different perspective than, than what's on the Plan Commission. It's, it's, you know, this is, this is absolutely nothing against Jack or anyone else on the Plan Commission. Um, and I, and I do respect the experience, but I think I bring another perspective. And for me, what brought it out was the Sugar Creek Commons, um, debate. And I felt like there was a viewpoint that wasn't, wasn't being, wasn't being recognized, a way to look beyond just, just, uh, at the facts and figures and about placemaking and making places that, that, that we want, that'll be good for the community. Um, and I also felt like the, uh, at least judging from the Verona Press account, that the, um, developers of the Sugar Creek Commons were a little caught off guard by some of the response they got on the, the final vote. And so I thought that it might be better to have another perspective earlier in the process, so they could, they could at least potentially know what's coming. I only, I only speak for myself, um, but I think, I think there are some other people who share at least, at least, um, some of my views. So I'm asking for your support tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. With that, Ms. Lick, would you read the roll, please, for a roll call vote?
Alder Person Gaskill.
Alder Diaz.
Alder Person Linder.
Linder.
Alder Person Riki.
Diaz.
Alder Person Steiner.
Linder.
Alder Person Touche.
Linder.
Alder Person Diaz.
Alder Diaz.
Alder Person Doyle.
Alder Diaz.
That motion fails, uh, so we will put this Agenda Item on, on the next council meeting again. Uh, next, we have new business, approval of operator licenses. Ms. Lick, do we have any this evening?
No.
We have none. Uh, we are down to Agenda Item twelve, which is announcements. Any announcements this evening? Seeing no announcements, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Ms. Riki, seconded by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Thank you, everyone.